So this is a recording of the Southwood Public Library Board of Trustees. It is April 12th at 7:03 PM if you want to go around. Lynn Blair.
Cindy Warner.
Michael McMahon.
Tracy Meswar.
Maria Gallo.
Public comments? I don't see any members for public.
Nobody on Zoom?
We'll move on to communications.
For the recording, we have Jen Bell that just arrived. So communications. Okay, so communications. So we have started giving out surveys. We started April 1st, so I've gotten about 50 back. So that's been very good. They've been very good about handing out to people at the desk. Here's your books half a survey and hopefully we'll get some back. So and their responses have been very positive. So we will, we will see and I will give everybody a report once we get everything back in. We have also started giving out the new resident packets. We've been sending out postcards to new residents just to say, welcome to the community. Drop by the library, sign up for card and all that fun stuff. So we've, we've had a couple that have gone out so far. And hopefully that will increase some new card signups. And actually that was it that I had for communications because everything else is down below. Everybody, everybody should have a copy of all. I think I just see one correction in your January minutes. I think Tracy, your name is spelled wrong.
Oh, yep.
But I think that's all I see.
Yeah, looks good. Are we going to do all three of them?
And for the, for the March ones. And since Cindy, since you sent me a copy, I can just make the edits once, um, once I get back to my computer. March is spelt wrong at the very top. And then, and then I just need to change Heather's, Heather Dunphy's last name is spelt wrong. So I can correct that. And then on the last page for the budgetary hearings, it's the 19th. Not that it matters because it's already cast, but I can make that change.
I make a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections.
Second motion. No.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Maria, yes.
Elvin, yes.
Cindy Warner, yes.
Okay, so everybody should have a copy of the March statistics in your packet. And March was another stellar month. So we had 5,348 physical circulation. So I mean, it keeps, it keeps going up, which is, it's really good. 13 new, new signups for card. 3,000 for a door count, which is fantastic. So it's, it's been very steady.
Looks like we could move on to all business.
So a quick update on our LSTA grant. We're halfway through, so I submitted a report to the Board of Libraries Missioners so that they could see what's been spent so far. We've already spent down all of our bigger ticket items. So we got the study cubbies, which I'm hoping to be open by the end of the week. I have some paperwork to discuss with you later. We got a new projector. We got some supplies from the study cubbies. So we got like, we got whiteboards. If you haven't been over, they look pretty snazzy over in the corridor. I think it's kind of. I mean, I don't, it's livened up the space. I mean, we're a library, so it.
Right, it brightens it up.
Makes it look a little nicer. So, and we got chairs. We got wheelie chairs, which the teens will probably be very excited about. But so it, it looks good. We just, I just have to get maintenance to do one adjustment on the tables and we're good to go.
Not gonna lie, I wish I had a wheelie chair.
I, I did steal this one from the desk. I know the chairs we have in here, they're, they're not so comfy. So yeah, that is all set. Things are going good. So a majority of the money we have left to spend is just earmarked for programs. So we're going to continue with those through the end of September. And as far as to fill everyone in, because I can't remember who was here or not, when we discussed Hoopla and their materials. Essentially, long story short is that some libraries found objectionable content that was already in the Hoopla library available to patrons. It sounds like Hoopla has caught all the titles that are offensive or there was some like pro-Nazi, you know, type materials in there. And what they say is that, you know, they have people and they also have some kind of electronic vetting system that.
Can you remind me what Hoopla is?
Hoopla is our digital library. So we have one through CW Mars and then this is another one that we offer to our patrons.
Where is this one at?
What was that?
Like I know CW Mars, who, who made this one?
This is just something that libraries can join at where they want to. So it's CW Mars is paid through our membership. They are very good about vetting materials. This is another one. If we signed up for it.
So CW Mars is a library organization for libraries?
Yeah, so Hoopla, Hoopla is owned by Midwest Tapes and they're a vendor that we go through to get materials like our audiobooks, music, movies, things like, so they, they do cater to libraries.
But they're a business.
But they're a business. So and essentially, you know, a concern is that the materials. They, in, in CW Mars with Overdrive, the librarians pick what goes in there. We can purchase specific titles to be added to that collection. But with Hoopla, you pay for the library and this is what you get. And it's already preloaded. Everything's in there. So somewhere in their vetting system for materials, a few things kind of slipped through. So the discussion, it sounds like, it sounds like this, this is kind of being tackled by the bigger libraries and working on the discussion. Like I know Worcester's very on top of it. The last couple of meetings I've attended, I haven't heard from anybody that they are canceling altogether. The discussion is just kind of continuing to see if Hoopla can clean up their act and give a little bit more clarity to their vetting system on how items actually make it into their collection.
Really anti-Nazi?
Yes.
But I'm also really anti-limiting access to material.
Yes, and that's, and that's, that's the thing. And that's why I think a lot of us are hesitant to cancel because of, you know, that, that it's also censorship and we want to be careful about that. And I still have with me, because I know, I know there were a few people that didn't make it last time. These were just a few kind of samples of things that were in the collection. So it sounds like Hoopla has put a focus on cleaning up their act. And I think a lot of the standpoint of libraries right now is just let's, let's wait and see. Let's see if they can kind of hold up to their end of the bargain and their promises and actually make sure that, you know, they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
It's like a couple of months ago in another part of the country, it was an issue of what kids should be taught or what teachers were allowed to teach in classrooms. And somebody said, it should be balanced. And they said, well, there's certain topics that you can't really balance. And I use, let's say, the war in the Ukraine.
Yeah. Why? What's wrong with it? A joke, joke, sorry.
Jen, most of what Lynn just said is in the March minutes. In case you need to refer to it for whatever it is, it is in the March minute.
Yeah, so I am, I am in the boat of, um, I mean, it's, it's you, we have nature that they use it, that like it. So I'm in the boat with kind of sticking with what other libraries are doing and just monitoring. Obviously I can't monitor everything that they have in their collection. That's impossible. So we just kind of have to hope that they are going to do what they say they're going to do and pay a little closer attention to how they get their collection.
Probably, yeah, now that they're, they're more aware of it, that more people know about it. They'll be a little more attentive. At least let's hope so.
Yep. Was there another edit we need to change?
It's a little one. It's not a few.
Where, where do we need to change? Oh, is it spelled wrong?
It said dash and a capital.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thanks.
So yeah. I appreciate the conversation that was had in March. But is anyone talking to Hoopla about how they are cataloging these?
Yes.
Or are they just talking about removing?
I think, I think they're talking about more of their vetting system as opposed to cataloging. And from what I understand, there's almost kind of an automated portion to the way they. And they, I can't, I can look back. They had a very strange term of describing it that when they add things to their collection, there's an actual person, but then there's also somehow, you know, an automated vetting system. So I assume that a lot of their cataloging is probably somehow, you know, not. Every person, like here, we catalog every book. I don't think there's a person in there cataloging every item. Could be wrong on that aspect. But I think right now what they're talking about directly with Hoopla is mainly removing the items or working on, working on somehow creating a better collection development policy. Because I said, I think we discussed this last time in that, you know, some of those titles might have a better home in like an academic collection as opposed to Hoopla where Hoopla is a lot of entertainment. I mean, people don't really go to Hoopla saying, I'm going to do some research here and look up some hardcore nonfiction books. I'm doing in-depth research. This is more of like an entertainment based app. So, which is also makes those kind of things being in there a little bit unexpected. But we're still waiting. I know the director from Worcester was supposed to have a meeting with Hoopla at the Public Library Association Conference. When was it? A couple of weeks ago? So I'm hoping we get an update on that just to see how the conversation went. But as, as for now, I'm, I am fine with monitoring as best we can. You know, and, and keeping up with the conversations with other libraries and I know what they're doing.
Yeah, as I know. Don't necessarily think that we need to be, like you say, having it there.
Any other questions about Hoopla? So under new business. And I think this happened between the last time we met. So our new circulation librarian Sunny who started in January, she unfortunately had to leave us to find full-time work. So we are in the process of hiring a new circulation librarian. So I finished up interviews yesterday and just about to pick a name and bring it to the select board. So we're, we're moving along.
You've had it on the NBLC website.
I did.
And you, you ran ads in the Westfield News.
Yep, yep. And we've, you know, I've posted it on our Facebook page just because people, people see that. Westfield News, all of the library job boards. So we got a good response and, and I'm hoping by tomorrow I'll just be able to write for a letter to the select board. We've had some very good candidates and I think we've.
About how many applications?
I think there was five.
That, that beats having openings in the past where you get one or two.
Yes, yeah, it's been, it's been very hard to predict these past couple of years. So, yeah, so I think, I think we found the right person and I'm just going to touch base with them and then we will go forward.
And they understand what days that we, and what the hours are.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's, yeah. Exactly, yeah. So it's, it's all, it's all in the job posting. And then I always, you know, the very beginning of our interview, make sure to reiterate, you know, that they're aware that it's part-time and these are the days and hours that are expected. So. Okay, so that is in the works. If you have a question for you. So our May cookbook club meeting. I have always been very careful about kind of planning my time off around the cookbook club meetings. But this month, in May, is unfortunately, and my husband's 30th birthday. So we want to do something special for him and we're having a big party. So I'm taking a little time off to, to hide out.
Or other.
He can't change his birthday for one year.
I know. Usually he's good, but it's, it's his 30th. So we're going to do something fun. But, um, so I did tell the cookbook club that we're going to skip May. A couple of people brought forward that they would like to do a cookie swap. And unfortunately, because the way that it falls that month, I was going to move it, you know, the week before. But then I realized that that's town meeting and I have to be a town meeting. So it's, May is just not a good month. And we're going to be short-staffed because we have somebody going on leave. So it's, it's all around, just not a good month. So I was approached by a couple of people who wanted to do a cookie swap instead. However, when we run the cookbook club, I have everybody sign waivers, just, you know, so that if you get food poisoning from something, somebody cooks, we're not held liable. You know, all of the, the COVID, you know, if you're ill, don't come, you know.
It's not a certified kitchen.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And that was approved by the previous Board of Health Director so that, you know, we can just cover all our faces because.
But the same thing would be true. It would be the cookbook club that's having the cookie swap. There won't be outsiders.
Yeah, and see that's, and see that's what I'm afraid of and that, you know, I feel, and it is, it is of my opinion and I'm, I'm always open to, to your feedback because, you know, I don't want to tell them no. However, I do feel like, you know, the waivers should be handled by a staff member. And we're just going to be too short-staffed to try to have to have, you know, we're going to have one person at the circulation desk and one person at reference. And to have them try to coordinate handling waivers. And also there's, there's the setup and everything that, you know.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah.
The way, my point is the waivers are already signed by members of the cookbook club.
Yes, but if there's, if there's new people and then, then we have to kind of.
The idea was to keep it to the cookbook club people and do a cookie swap.
Doesn't always work. I'm, that's what I'm afraid. There's always people that, because like what we do, the, the ones around Christmas time, we always get people who come to those cookie swaps and none of the other meetings.
Oh, really? Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I'm sorry.
No, no, that, and that's fine.
Obviously I'm pushing for it.
Yeah, and that's, that's just why I kind of wanted to bring it to the group just to get, you know, and this is. But it's the program that kind of makes me the most nervous and that's why we have the waivers. Because there's, there's so many things that, you know.
And you know, it's nothing new in this world right now to have a short staff and you have to cancel things.
Yeah, well, you know, I'll tell you, we did it at Christmas time and we did it outside in the cold.
Oh geez.
If you want to have a cookie swap, you can do it.
So a library trustee could step in and collect the neighbors.
I mean, if there was, if there was a trustee that would be willing to, to handle that, yeah, that's fine.
I, I could assist that trustee who's setting up the tables.
In exchange for some cookies. I see where you're going.
No, 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 no.
There's always a motive.
His wife would be one of the cookie bakers.
Well, yeah, I mean, I could swing by and collect.
Well, again, we all, we had already decided if it doesn't work out that we can't, you know, we couldn't do it here. We, again, we'll do it outside. It's the end of May. You know, if it rains, we'll just choose another day to do it. It's not, it's not that big a deal.
I have a question too. If it's a cookie swap, if you had people bring prepackaged the exact number of the people that were involved ahead of time, it would be harder for people who hadn't previously signed up for the cookie swap and sign the waivers ahead of time to try to come in and steal cookies.
Yeah, well, it's easy to prepackage the cookies, you know. Again, it's sort of what we did at Christmas.
When we do cookie swaps at schools, we always do it prepackaged because you can't be like tossing cookies all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
Again, at Christmas time, I, were you there for the Christmas one, the last one we did outside the senior center?
I haven't been to a cookbook meeting in a while.
Okay.
It, it was done behind Town Hall.
Yeah, it was on the picnic tables, you know, in the parking lot.
But I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to cop.
No, no, it was a Saturday.
Serve as the bad cop and tell people that without the waivers, they can't. No cookies, no waivers.
No way.
I feel like if you're doing prepackaged in the building too, there's less people, like people don't come like, oh, I think I see cookies over there.
I mean, and it could, it could be something whereas, you know, we wouldn't advertise it. It would just be for members only.
Right.
So.
You could even do an online waiver then, like a Google form and have people sign up.
That adds another level of complication. The cookbook club is, you know, is a very complicated animal. There's a lot of bells and whistles to it.
But again, if you're uncomfortable with it, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, at least in my opinion, um, you know, I would. And I don't want to, I don't want to say that I have to take the reins all the time. You know, I'm just, at this day and age, I just, I'm so careful about the waivers and everything. And I'm just afraid of, you know, with, with the cookbook club, there's, you know, there's a lot of needs. So there's, somebody's always back and forth in the kitchen. And I'm also afraid of putting the strain on our staff that are, you know, because the person who's going to be working on Tuesday evenings is going to be doing a split shift. So she's going to be here in the morning, then coming back at night. So it's.
Okay. It's obviously you're uncomfortable with it. So I would, I would say just don't worry about it.
Too much on everybody else.
That's fine because, um, again, I'm sure we can do it outside.
Yeah.
The senior center like we did in the wintertime, it'll be warmer.
And I mean, and it's, and it's just a month. So I mean, I, I'm sure everybody's okay with skipping a month.
Yeah.
Hopefully. I did get a couple of looks last time when I said we were going to be canceling.
Wait till she tells you she's canceled the book sale.
Oh.
Well, the friends canceled the books.
The friends canceled the book sale, but I also asked them very nicely that.
Very nicely.
I, I did, I, I went back and forth. Trust me, this did not come lightly in asking them that we have been getting requests daily for people saying for months, can we drop off books? I have 100 books to drop off. I can't, I can't handle that volume of, they, I, I was, I don't think they realized what they were going to get. They, it's going to be a flood of donations. And even if they set up times that people can come in to donate, people don't, people don't abide by that. They're going to show up whenever and our staff are going to have to help with that. And it's just, and we've also, people have been cleaning out their homes and their basements and their attics. And there's been boxes left outside our door in the morning that I will not even bring into the building. They're just so filthy. So, you know, I did tell them that I can guarantee that we'll have enough weeded books to use in the book sale, but they decided they didn't want to do that. So unfortunately, I just, I did have to ask them that. They, I'm, they were just going to get buried with donations. It was just going to be too much. And unfortunately, like I said, we, we are going to be short-staffed and.
There was always the tent and the dumpster.
Yeah.
And you see the stuff put directly in the dumpster.
And then, but then that, that, creating all that work is unfair to people too. You know, somebody drops off something, we have to dumpster it. It's just.
Well, we is good about doing the pop-up sales.
Yeah.
You know, where we take books, we already have and put them out there with a sign that day. So people don't have time to bring us a lot of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's the way around that.
You know, there's been days that we've got multiple phone calls with people, you know. Over the past years, people have been home and cleaning out. Can we bring in stuff? You know, there's been mornings that we've had stacks in front of, I can't even open our front doors until we lose boxes of stuff. And I was just not ready to put our staff through that and put myself through that.
Especially being short-staffed.
Yes, because at, at that time, I wasn't sure. It looks like we're not going to be short-staffed till later in May, but at the time they were planning it, we could have very well been short-staffed in the beginning of May.
Well, to add to the problem also was the Agawam Library being closed.
Yes.
Because they could accept books during the year and would keep them for a book sale.
And now it's still closed and they think it might open in June, maybe.
Yeah.
So, so that's my reasoning unfortunately, and I, and I did not take it lightly asking them. It, trust me, it, it bothered me for weeks. And I just, I had to say, you know, no, this is, this is a bad idea. I can see this going extremely badly. And just being completely buried with donations. And it's just, it's not manageable. Because people call and they want to drop them off two weeks beforehand. It's just, and then when we say no, they drop them off anyway. It's just. So like I said, I did offer our weeded materials. I haven't been reading as much because we've been so busy, but I could have done a huge weed and we'd have plenty of stuff, but they decided that the library weeded materials don't sell as well. And so they decided not to go ahead with the book sale. That's my two cents. I know I, I know there was, there was probably a couple of, my God, what is she doing type things? But I'm not trying to be a dictator in this sense, but I'm also just trying to make sure that we, you know, protect our, our collection. Well, I protect ourselves and our staff because everybody's burnt out. We've been short-staffed, come and going. And also protect our collection because like I've said, some of the stuff that people have donated is, I would not consider bringing it into our building, putting it near our physical collection because, you know, molds and just. And so hopefully.
And the health of your staff.
Yeah, everybody's super.
Mold coming in.
Yeah.
It's not good for the.
And all, all we've got to do is watch local TV news and see the problems in Springfield and the problems they had in Aggie.
So I had to be a media for the cookbook club and the book sale, but at least it was. I think everybody well understood.
Of course. You know, as I said, we can always find ways around your. You know, as I said, we can always find ways around your thing, no?
Yeah, exactly. So, so there we go.
It'll come up tomorrow night. Don't worry about it.
Oh, I'll be here for tomorrow.
You won't be here for tomorrow?
I will be, I will be. I'm, I'm ready for it.
The friends meet tomorrow night.
Okay, so if there's, so it sounds like we will just say no at the cookbook, cookbook club for May. We're, we're back on in June and I was planning on continuing running it through the summer anyway, because, I mean, people still come. We did it last summer. People still come, so. Okay, so, um, we received our second, um, state aid dispersment payment. So our second award was ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Our second award for a grand total this year for the two awards of twenty thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents.
And that's probably the highest amount we've gotten in the last ten or fifteen years.
Yeah, which is, which is really wonderful. It's nice to have that as a buffer for extra funds for, because I know, um, as our children's room has been getting busier, Molly's been getting a lot of great ideas on different things to do and add to the collection. So we will certainly make use of it. Okay, um, so I gave everybody a copy of, as, as I mentioned before, the friends bought us two new items to add, using to the library of things. One being a power washer and the other being a metal detector. And I gave everybody a copy of the statement of waiver and indemnification for the library of things. So we have people sign it before they take it home, just so that they can agree that, you know, if they injure themselves or anything like that. But what I wanted to, to clarify and make sure is that if, if you guys, because I feel like with, with the tools and everything, that's covered here. However, with the metal detector, people have to be aware that they can't just go to any, there's, there's legal things you can and can't do. You can't just go to anybody's yard and start metal detecting. So I wanted to ask your opinion and see if this waiver you feel is, is strong enough or if there's anything we should do to reword it. But I, I feel like item three, that the borrower agrees to indemnify and hold harmless the library, so on and so forth, against all liability claims lost actions. I feel like that part covers us from any, you know, if anybody were to go metal detecting illegally, that they, they are responsible for their own actions.
Do we include with the attachment tools borrowing rules and procedures of the South Pacific Library? Does it have rules for each item?
Each item, no. Rules for each item. They, they created something that was kind of a blanket to cover everything. I mean, we can make something to go with that particular item.
I just, I mean, you have the attachment. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I mean.
So when you borrow an item, do you get instructions on how to use it?
If the item, if it's like a tool and it came with instructions, then yes. Um, as far as the metal detector, it came with more of just instructions on how to use, nothing that like advises you, you know, because it's different from state to state where you can go and actually metal detect. Yeah, I mean, what I can do is I could just make something to just attach with the metal detector, you know, that by borrowing, you're, you're aware that you're responsible for checking to see where you can and can't go to actually. And if you find a valuable piece on a piece of land that you're not supposed to be on, then that's your problem, but.
What's the name of the guy who was just since, I think it was today's paper?
Oh, Jeremiah Ferris. Yeah, I've been in touch with him about doing the program, so hopefully he'll get back to us. Yeah, because that would be cool. He says he can do like a seeded huts where he like, you can kind of dig a hole so it's inconspicuous and then have people go test it out in the yard.
That just sounds fun. I wanna take it.
You've gotten a lot of publicity in the last three or four weeks.
We have, we have.
You were below the fold.
I was below the fold, but it was still on the front cover, so. So, yeah, I mean, if you guys feel that this waiver covers us, and then I can just also attach something, I think there was instructions that came with the metal detector and just attach something to that that need to be aware, you are responsible for figuring out all the state and local guidelines for.
Will be the sentence, if I rent a car, her driveway just doesn't tell me, don't drive on private property. But if I drive someplace long,
Yeah.
I'll have to deal with it.
I mean, and granted, I guess anybody could check out one of the tools and do something illegal with it, but, you know, so.
Is there any purpose to having the town attorney look at something like this?
No, that's a good point. I could, I could ask.
Five hundred or a thousand bucks?
Maybe, maybe it's.
And it would take a month or two to get it back.
Yeah, so I mean, but I have a feeling they probably. They probably already looked at this. I think it was Diane who put the library things together. I feel like they probably would have already looked at this to make sure that. Because this, this is very, this is very legal language.
Yeah.
And I don't, and I don't know if, you know, if this is something Diane would have pulled together herself or if like, you know, they had another pair of eyes.
So maybe you think of an attorney because of the line.
Yeah. Okay, so if everybody's okay with that, then I will just, I've been meaning to get that stuff cataloged and ready to go, but hopefully soon. Okay. And then I sent everybody a copy of the emergency procedures. I, I just was hoping everybody could look through it briefly. It's, um, and if anybody's looking for it, I didn't print it out, but I have a copy. I had to print it out for everybody because it's almost twenty pages. So where it stands now, I got feedback from the fire chief. I've been talking with Charlie Dunlap, Charlie Dunlap, for some feedback as well. And I'm also hoping to lieutenant, I sent it to Lieutenant Vanish and we're hopefully gonna meet next week. Because there's some parts in here that I just am not qualified to, you know, for example, for, for a lockdown, our building is very.
In terms of Charlie, is the basement a shelter?
Yes, yes. He says yes. He says it's a tornado shelter. And he was very, he was very enthusiastic about it. He was very excited about our tornado shelter. So, um, yes. Yes, so there's, there's just a couple of things in here, like, um, you know, lockdowns. We are not a building that is set up for a lockdown. We are big and open and even if we can shut offerings, there's a glass wall here. I mean, it's not, so I'm hoping, um, the lieutenant can come and kind of give me some feedback on that.
One thing was mentioned.
To hide in that corner where you can't be seen by the windows.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I'm thinking in terms of like, you know, if somebody really wanted to get in. Yeah, and that, and see, that's why I need somebody with, because I spend too much time here. I need somebody with a little pair of eyes to come in and be like, okay, corner, basement, you know.
One thing was mentioned in here, I cleared the pages, about going outside and going to some assembly area. Do employees know?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I haven't, I haven't given anybody any of this information yet because it's all still a draft and we're working on it. But I believe in one of the beginning areas, I detailed where the assembly area is. But any, even, even before I give it to all the staff, we're probably gonna have a, a staff meeting just to kind of get everybody up to speed on everything. Not to scare anybody, but like, you know, especially after today's news. I mean, the world is a scary place, so we. So, you know. We need to have something.
Right.
In place. So like I said, hopefully Lieutenant Vanish can meet with me next week just to get his feedback on things. Um, because our building was, it's not very well designed to be secure, in my opinion. It's very open. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and when the building was built twenty-two years ago, I mean, the world was a different place.
You didn't think like that.
Yeah. So I'm gonna get some feedback on that and hopefully finish up a draft and, um, and we'll get everybody trained and in good shape. Okay, and so I've been working with our phone company to try to, because I think our phone system is about probably as old as the building or roughly around there. I mean, and a lot of our staff have been trying to get cordless phones, which would be, make things a lot easier. So, um, I'm just gonna, I'm mentioning it to you. Obviously, I'm gonna go talk to, Jim, the computer guy, and Carl at the town hall afterwards, because, um, from what I was talking with the phone system, the town hall went to a cloud system, however many years ago, and it just never happened here. So the price I got, um, for a new phone system, and it's still an estimate, would be about a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. Um, so it's not. I, but it's not that much higher. And I, I didn't unfortunately write down, I got a, got a quote for how much we currently pay. It's not that much different from currently pay.
How many different phone lines do you have? Is it like three or four lines?
We have, yeah, we have one main one that comes to the building. And then, um, so how it would work is it would be about a hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. And then the cable, they would need to do cabling for each phone, and that would be about two hundred to three hundred dollars per phone. And then we need to get a switch to update that technology. And he's estimating that at about three, three fifty.
With the phone lines and that is a one-time cost.
Yes, yeah, it's a one-time cost. And, and then so that, that is, that in itself. And then we purchased, I think we got six or seven desktop phones that we'd wanna replace. So they would build the cost of the phones into our monthly pay, under monthly plan until we pay it off. So, I mean, I'm gonna obviously take the costs, take it to, before we make any plans to do anything, take it to Carl, take it to Jim, just say, this is what we're thinking. These are the prices that I've gotten quoted and go from there, because that we, we're having a lot of trouble with our phone system. It's, some days it, it has issues.
Because you might wanna get two or three prices once you figure it out.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, I talk to the town before we step on any toes or anything. But, you know, if the town hall got upgraded, I think it's probably time for us to get upgraded as well, because they are, they are not in the best of shape. And we have a lot of issues with it from time to time.
Who's your carrier knowledge provider?
We have Comcast.
Oh, Comcast, okay.
Yep, we have Comcast. Um, and then our phones are serviced through. I've been going through Valley Communications. So that's, that's where we stand right now. I just wanted to make you guys aware. You know, before, obviously, before I do anything, I'll talk to the town and, you know, firm things up with them, because I'm sure they'll wanna know and go from there. Okay, and the last thing that I have for you guys is, so our study spaces are almost ready to go. So what I did was I gave everybody a copy of, um, what's, what I'm kind of dealing with now is how much, you know, there's kind of a paper trail to go through for an outside group to rent the community room. So I'm kind of going through, how much of a process do we wanna go through to have people book the study spaces? Because with the community room, you know, they fill out a form, long form, how many people to be expected. And also a waiver, you know, that if they break anything or damage anything or have a wild ruckus in here, that they're gonna be responsible for any any damages, any costs incurred, anything like that. So I did, I did write up the same thing with the study spaces. I don't know how much we want to not necessarily complicate things, but, um, so, so the first page I gave you for the study spaces is just, you know, if people need to fill out a form prior to use, just so we can see, you know, so that we can get proof that they reserved it, so on, so forth. I did say no more than five people in there at a time. I think that's reasonable, given the space. And then I also wanted to make sure with you all that it was okay, because the community room, we only have nonprofit groups rent. Because we don't want a big business coming in here and, you know, promoting their business. That's not what we stand for. However, the study spaces are ideal for tutors, but obviously tutors aren't nonprofit. So I just wanted to make sure that that was acceptable to you guys, if we would allow it to be, you know, spaces that can be used by, by a for-profit group.
For profit, profit group, are you, then having a schedule of charging the rent?
I would say no. Yeah, I mean, I, that would get complicated. My, my thing, the only for-profits that I could see, like, you know, we've had a woman that tutors a couple of students asking about the space. I mean, I'm not expecting any business owner to come in here and set up camp in one of the areas. I guess we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, it's an ideal space for tutors.
Well, if they're tutoring a, a student from town.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't the space benefit a student from town?
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, it, it happens, it happens here anyway, and, you know, and I don't, I don't see the need to, to, some places charge rent and I don't see the need for anything like that.
I mean, we wanna make the library.
Absolutely.
Accessible for people.
Exactly, exactly. So I just wanted to make sure that that was acceptable to you guys, um, because I think it's, it's more than reasonable. I mean.
Is there a time limit?
I didn't set a time limit.
I, I didn't say anything here.
No, no, and I didn't, I didn't set a time limit. I don't know if you think that there should be, I mean, if somebody wants to come and hang out for three or four hours, I mean.
You know more than we do about how many people are coming in to do a, a study and.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Yeah, then maybe we can.
There's only two areas.
Yeah, yeah. So there's two areas.
I'm gonna have my lunch break now.
Somebody does tax returns.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but then again, if we open it up for profit, then that could technically happen, but, I mean.
Yeah.
It's still a community space and they're still using it. And I mean, so, so, yeah, that's, that's where we stand at that. Um, staff was very adamant about wanting it for reservations because it, it's a very enticing space to the teams, I think. And they could, you know, come in after school and move in and just hang out. And, I mean, it's not what it's meant for. So, and that way we can kind of guarantee that if somebody needs it, they can make the arrangements to. Jenny wants to say, I know.
I'd rather have a group of teens using a study space as a library than a tutor. Even if their studying doesn't look.
Like actual studying, yeah. And I mean, that's, that's a fair point too, you know.
Oh, no, teenagers coming into the library and hanging out, how terrible.
Well, I mean, they can still hang out, just they have to reserve the study space is what you're saying.
And if there's a tutor that comes in every single day with their team, they're, they're, sorry, they're charged and they're getting money and they're sitting there and they're tutoring. And then the teens wanna go in there because they have a project, but they can't because they're teenagers and they're too teenager-y to make reservations. Like, it just seems kind of judgy.
And I mean, we do, we do have the, the young adult space with Heather makes, I mean, I know they don't always like it because it's kind of right in front of our circulation desk. And, you know, they, they feel like that we're watching them, I think, you know, to make sure that they aren't causing any trouble. And they've, they've been very good this year. They've been, one year they broke a door, but they've been very good this year. And they've been, they've been very good this year. They've been, one year they broke a door, but they've been very good this year. So yeah, no, they, they have, they, please don't feel like we're, we're judging, but you know, they have their own space and, you know, they make, they make use of it. And that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys, because I wanted to get your feedback as well, just to make sure there will be, making sure that it's accessible to everyone. You know, without, you know, discriminating against, you know, obviously teenagers, obviously, you know, people who wanna use it for tutoring. But I guess it could also, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different types of teenagers and, you know, some wouldn't think to make a reservation, some might, you know. I might, I know if it was me as a teen, I would be too shy to ask the librarian if I could use the space.
When I guess the question I think is, if it's open and there's nobody reserving it.
Yeah, if it's, if it's open.
Then they can use it, right?
Yeah, if it's, and the way, yeah, the way, the way we kind of designed it, if it's open and you come in and you see there's nobody in there, ask us. And if there's nobody using it for an hour or two, then you're welcome to head in.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and it's written right there. Definitely.
Yeah, so, so I have, I have kind of the, the basic policy on the first page. Then on the second page, I just took, I-
How many weeks in advance can you make a reservation?
That's what I've been debating about too, because I was thinking, and I didn't, I didn't add it in there, but I was thinking, you know, no more than maybe a month or two in advance. And also I was afraid of people coming in and wanting to like block, book it.
Yeah, that's right.
Which, you know, can get kind of complicated. So maybe, maybe I should add a line, you know. We can't accept reservations more than a month in advance. And that way, I guess somebody couldn't plan their business or their, you know, their tutoring schedule around.
I mean, I guess the other thing I'm thinking is too, is if you have tutors that wanna use it, but then you have high schoolers that legitimately wanna meet with small groups for projects and things, it might be worthwhile to, I don't know, maybe make connection with the high school and say this is available. So this is how you make the reservation. And this is how much time you need to make the reservation in advance.
Yeah, once, once we get everything ready, I was planning to kind of do a big advertising class so that everybody's aware. And then we'll, we'll touch back, touch base with the high school so that, you know, at least, or at least with the librarian up there. She would probably know the best way of getting the word out, you know, if people are interested. So I can make a change on the first page. So no reservations more than a month in advance. And I think that, that will make it more fair to people trying to come in and book. And I'm also afraid of somebody coming in and, I want it from Monday from two to four for the next year. Yeah, yeah. Okay, and so what I did on page two was, our community room reservation form is very long and we don't have to worry about half of it because people who have events in here bring in food and drinks and so on and so forth. So I just made it simple. This is their name, the contact person, the day they requested, when they, when they want it. And just kind of a little blurb below, you know, that they're, you know, you'll be responsible if you take our whiteboard markers and actually write on the wall and all that stuff. And the, the last page, we have, when people book the community room, they have to sign the indemnification, hold harmless agreement. I did copy it and put it in here. I, I did make a few changes in the wording because it's not gonna be a large organization that comes in and books. So I, and I wasn't even sure if this last page is really needed or if it's just more paperwork than absolutely, you know, than necessary. I mean, because you know, I don't, I, when, when people book the community room, it's a huge, usually a, a huge, but a larger group of people. This is gonna be maybe four to five people, maybe less. I mean, I don't know how much paperwork, you know, and how crazy we wanna get with things. But I did attach it in case you guys wanted to use it. And when I asked around, a lot of them kind of do it how we are going to do it with the reservations and all of that, how they go about signing people up. A lot of people have digital systems now, which I think is more complicated than I wanna get into. But um, yeah, most, most other places, you know, have the reservations and they sign something to say that they're not gonna damage or that they'll be held responsible if they damage anything. So this, this isn't very different from what any other library is doing. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, our bases are covered, so if somebody actually goes in and takes their whiteboard marker and goes all over everything that, you know. So, I mean, this, this last page, I don't know if it's too much, if we just wanna have it just to have it or how you guys feel. I mean. I think it's fine. Yeah.
Yeah. Protect the library. Supply a certificate of insurance.
They maybe, yeah, and that's, that, like I said, I copied most of it from the community room application. So yeah, the, it, it basically says that the trustees reserve the right to require them to supply a certificate of insurance, which
isn't gonna happen, but.
Isn't gonna, isn't gonna happen.
But again, let's be safe and sorry.
But it's safe, and I guess in there, it's, you know, where they reserve the right. So it's not like we're saying, yes, we require you to do this or no, you don't have to. So it's, it's in there if we need it, I suppose, but. So I mean, if everybody's happy with this, um, I will just make the edit on the first page that we say, you know, that we can't accept reservations more than a month in advance. And then I guess we start using it and if there's any edits and any unexpected issues that come up, then we can just make changes as we go.
Good job.
Yeah, that's a lot of work. But it's, but the spaces are, if you're on your way out, check them out. They're really cool.
Where are they?
They're in the back corner. Yep, so.
To the left of the children's.
Yeah, so before you go in the kids' rooms, take a left.
Okay.
Yep. So if you guys would like to vote for this to be approved with the change, then I will get all the paperwork ready and we could have, hopefully have people start using it once we get our tables adjusted, but that's another thing.
Hi Tracy, accept the use of study meeting spaces with the discussed changes. Tracy, this one, yes.
Maria, yes.
Eldon, yes.
Sandy Warner, yes. And, and that was it for me. Usually we're in and out. That was a.
Yeah.
Okay, so our next meeting will be May tenth. May tenth, seven PM. And if somebody wants to make a-
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
A second, Tracy.
Okay.